...a word of prayer by Mr. D. if he's willing to do that.
Mr. D. is always willing.
A blessing to the Lord, now and ever. The Lord who stands on the nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And you take a trial. I pledge allegiance to the Texas on state and with God and indivisible.
Mr. D.. Alright. Precious Lord, as we come before you this morning, we ask you to give us guidance and direction for the good of this county and beyond. And the decisions that need to be made, we pray that they'll be prudent decisions and constructive decisions. We ask your blessings upon all that are in attendance, that really care about this county with their presence being here. And we ask your blessings upon us as we leave today and we go about our business in different facets. And we ask you to use us for your glory and your honor and your praise. Amen.
Amen. Out of number four, the head of the book.
I saw Park and Shepherd is looking at us.
That brings me to out of number five, asking for the first of out of the program. Can you be interested for what is going to happen will be taken out. So also, I think we may have a bill that comes through when he attends some pictures. That's good enough.
That's it, really good. I've been over there. When everybody's gone, looking around making sure. Almost stopped.
Well, I see. Well, I can hear that. Did you think that was a secret? Oh, yeah, yeah. But thank y'all, bless them. So, just saw my chair, I said to everybody, I filed a budget on the fifteen. Proposed budget, it's just a proposed budget. We put voted and had a meeting to set the proposed rate, which is down to point five three or point five oh. And when I send out, I filed a motion of proposed budget. The law requires that I send a letter to each elected official. The bottom name of the proposed salaries in the proposed budget. This year's proposed budget, considering the financial situation we're in, jail, being shut down. I did not place any raises in the draft, so I received four or five grievances from various elected officials. And they're all required at some point to want, normally, well, not normally. Some years earlier on in the year will have an item only gendered to establish the grievance committee. They got the one fifty to one oh one four, the local government. I don't expect grievances, but we haven't. So far this year, we haven't set up the commission. And I'm not trying to duck the dollar, but I think there is a plan on it. We have to have a meeting set and all that good stuff. So I'm torn off the idea of discussing that issue. Have slightly an executive session and then coming back in out of nineteen, a term existed recently. So we could then establish the grievance committee. But what are you guys saying, brothers? Do we have time to wait till another meeting to set and set the committee at that time? The time thing is what we have the time on. Is that going to be you guys' part, man? If we know we need to do it, it's not like we're spending money. At the start of it now, I don't know. Like I said, I didn't expect that I could have done this yet. You thought I'd be thinking about that. But I'm gonna try to run through this pretty fast, but there's not a big difficulty. I have press and economic development matters kicking off about one o'clock today. So I'm gonna try to run through this briefly. Alright, out of number ten, consideration discussion possible for passing proof of amendment resolution. TXCGVG grant CDB twenty-one oh three six seven at the root scope of our group's budget constraint. That's the code here. I want to also, yeah, this list was picked up in five four in twenty.
How was the word spoken?
Nineteen. And I finally got approved last year. I started doing a couple times, we got approved, not actually the roads. We got a lot of people. We got about four. This is just we ended up. Did you travel, went around for some time, but we got them. We got the wish, and now we're just making that most reliable. I don't have a way to vote. We had to turn off. I think it's, I forgot. We're trying to reduce the, but then trying to make sure there's work to give. So what we're looking for, the motions are approved. Not that we're. On the front story. So I have a motion by permission granted second by. Any questions? I have the unanimous three to two dollars. That makes me happy. Out of number eleven, consideration discussion possible for voting to the minimum of five minutes from the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, Mrs. Kirk, leaving the question of the warning. Says Fran, reduction of grant administration service, the lack of community management services for the heavy motivation type of open grant management services. DLA, not DLA, HMTB. In addition to our twelve are shown from assignments in March twenty-third, twenty-two. Now, we met. And I've looked at the minutes and sometimes we bounce around. The way the minutes are set, it's out of twelve, she's at twelve, and that's say what we did. And then if we go out of thirty-four, the next out of number is out of thirty-four. And then you go back to thirteen. But we went to twelve at least three or four times. I mean, they said we need to do this, but page four of the minutes, it says that we actually voted on something, Mr. Mack, now I'm making motions, Mr. Grant, now I'm making second, and it passed you now. I don't know if there's any change.
Um, the T line third of one fifteen management services. In that, in how it describes it, except hazard years, except vacancy team. And then in parentheses, it said hazard mitigation grant program. If it said hazard mitigation plan, that makes sense. That if you go a few times over, it's correct.
What do you mean to it, Phil, or you're just like, you want to take it pretty?
It needs to just say hazard mitigation plan.
I'm definitely not.
So what it says is, consideration discussion possible for open bid package to select an administrative service provider for HMTB asset mitigation grant program. Says seventy-five, five, twenty-five. I was anticipating that. I thought we passed everything that is necessary to hire y'all to move forward for hazard mitigation.
And yes, sir, I was thinking, I remember, and it was a lot of discussion back and forth coming out.
Yeah, we went, we passed around about four different things. We left the records reflect, we had three grant administration firms. So nobody can say we didn't compile the procurement group. We did all that, but Grant Works, Lafford, and H two O Partner, each submitted a proposal. So when I said, yes, definitely right, Mr. Mack, now I made the motion, Mr. Grant, second, five over the man. So. That's something. So what is it that you think we did wrong? I think we're shining spotlight on this issue because they're going to be easily recognized in the office program. Thank you for that, the reference, obviously.
And I can prove to say that. You actually had two engineers in the red room. And that's why there was a little confusion.
Well, we have one full thing, one shut off thing.
Well, on just that one item, you have two.
One for engineers, one for grants.
So you also had two separate documents to play your packages. One was for the company, one was for the team. And that was all the confusion, why, clearly, the people. But the purpose is, this is actually GLO, and it's a, you can see those three packages. It wasn't under the agency, the department, the vaccine, the GLO department for the hazard mitigation plan. The merge package is all.
Let's put an emergency. When I put off here, I'm trying to let the public know what we're talking about. Trying to prevent people from the HMTB, but the program. There's a few more digits that go with this thing is out of that, they get the national agreement. I don't think anything to do with any thing to do with HMTB, but if it's came out of HGL, do whatever else they're interested. I know I have to create the impression that we're proving something, we didn't actually do it.
You did do it.
Yes, I have the work. When we were first, we were like, ah.
Just sort of the minute setting of the, I was saying, hazard mitigation grant.
I know we talked about both, but that's not. Officer, the food, the food, that's how we get it back. I didn't. But they were fine. I have a motion that I can just. What happened, I'm sitting, make this out, it must have been the large. Any other comments, I would very say aye. Any votes, ayes and a noes. Thank you. I'll hurt up if I do it in real. Thanks again, we have three back. Will you say yes, you got the back? Make that one. Make that last guy, I got one picture, you want to hang around for us if we're going in the morning.
I have heard things you've told us, dude.
Oh, it's okay. Number twelve, consideration discussion possible for approved memorandum of understanding between the P D East Texas Council of Governors, the San San family, on the web EOC.
Good morning.
Uh, y'all should have anything else, thank you, is this a, an update to the weather, web EOC that we've been working on?
I believe briefly tell public where the next web EOC is.
So, uh, the web EOC program is, is a way we track storm, uh, storms. If we were to have a bigger county or, or agency, it's way for other cities or hospitals to be able to request.
EOC is emergency operating center. This is kind of going everywhere, it's good, on the web.
Yes, sir. We recently went to, well, they recently went to, uh, the cloud program. That's, that's why I can see a little bit of it recently, possibly.
Alright, I have a motion to ask for permission from Brandon. I have a second by permission from Martin. Any questions, all in favor, say aye. Any votes, ayes and a noes, you got it, three to two, brother. Thank you very much. Uh, next, number thirteen, consideration discussion possible for approved promised act of death of the Genesis Alert system.
So the Genesis Alert system is something we've been using for the last about a year and a half. For our citizens of potential storms or hazards for the county. Uh, we do partner with the daycare region, which saves us pretty much thirty thousand dollars a year, to be honest. Uh, and so that's, that's what that is.
So. What does this system do?
So when, when we have potential wildfire, hurricane, tornado.
How does it communicate with the world?
Via email, phones, text message, Facebook. It's nobody.
I have a motion to, uh, Commissioner Brandon. Second, second by Commissioner Martin. Any questions, all in favor, say aye. Any votes, ayes and a noes, three to two, brother. Out of number fourteen, consideration discussion possible for approved optional declaration of border class. Somebody asked me to.
Yeah, that was the chair officer, supposed to be here to talk about that this morning. Uh, and when I brought another grant for the practice. So I can't speak to that. I know, same one.
We did it a year ago.
Yes, sir.
We'll fly through the grant last year. We're way away from the border, and there's so many more closer that would kind of end for a background. Somebody had talked to this thing, I don't know what's the chance of this thing. You don't, you can't receive if you don't ask, but an order to ask like this, you have to have a look. What's the plan, I was going to ask. The gentleman, I don't know. What happened was that, would you maybe do something today? Or would you break with somebody here to talk about it?
I think it's something on the five or last time we did, except for on the field.
Yeah.
This thing you have to be in.
I don't see why we don't, you know, maybe it's not also something. Yeah, I just. I'm outside of, look, we're going to sign a declaration, that's the situation. The border class, so.
There was table that went there, couldn't even talk to you, I mean, after you went for a time. I didn't, I didn't get one. But why, by the way, man, I got something here. I don't know, I was just, yeah, I do that, I don't get one.
I do that, and this, last one, yeah, I'm spotted through the mask, we all from the dark, so. This declaration here, our, our, the use of our, our political resources, not going to, and, 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 and. That's different, it's very, and, 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 and. That formation, reviewing the document, examining the board's experience. Luckily, everybody in the tribe doesn't have some concern about this form of authority. But we did, we did. That's the same way, it's a, fully appreciated. Something I'm suffering to the fact that that is the border, yeah. Need a resolution in support of the grant in one day, we declare and the death. Which is, I'm not a man, I don't think it works. And it's clear, I think, the death, in order to be able to block the border. We're at the cross.
They, they apply the state, you gotta say, hey, we don't have a state of declaration. So that's.
First, first, second, third, fourth.
Yes, sir.
Declaration immediately, there's one to drive, probably first, first application for. On a problem, I'll say. I have a motion by permission from Brandon. A second by permission from Martin. If I'm not mistaken, I think. There's certainly, I'm not sure if there's people who have, but I think, I have to go along with some of the, some of the states. Yeah, they, you're right, you're right. Before I push it about, I'm so confused. Wander around the photo. There is, it seemed like there was a list, it looks quite expensive, I'm going to send that. One point seven three nine. Yeah. Don't think you don't get anything when you don't ask. Alright, I have a motion up for Mr. Brandon, second by Mr. Martin, any comments, all in favor, say aye. Any votes, ayes and a noes.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. November first. We got eleven of them. Getting marked on. Out of number fifteen, consideration discussion possible for review of the order. Of protection played out of distribution, grant, and the plan. And the plan to complete by two, the overtime played out of the central box. Let's start it.
This party, hanging out all the time, the man who works, makes me clean, he basically said a phone to the driver.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I know, over the last year or so, we, we've been, we've had shortages in the vampire. Added sailors, and we've added. Thought we were at a point where we could add, and finally added one people to. This is all supposed to help reduce the time, but we got enough staff to totally do the job. Shouldn't be any thing for the captain. But now it's worked out, and we need to draw on the captain. I care if they're weird, and then I got a pocket knife, fifty something, seventeen little slices. Kind of going to make some work.
There's pocket knife.
That's a big thing. But this week. I'm glad we don't have that, I think. So why are we getting over time for this week? Why are we getting over time for this week? I'm just doing the value too that are working in there, that's not right. It's a fight, which don't hold this time, I'm too bitter. And especially first. Okay, well, that, it started probably before you were here. It came, we planned an emergency, and we gave, gave those people a raise. And I think that, you know, they were able to hire some more people, but you still were five short, I didn't realize that. So if you don't have enough people to fill out a slot, somebody's got to go through it. That's what's essentially still happening. But look now. I suppose you're still looking for more help, how do you, how do you, what are you there to find more help? How do you do it in a hurry, child?
It's only another, I'm sorry, the D, it looks like an application, we don't have to go long, but they're all asking you to cooperate.
Well, yeah, I get that, I get that. Because we need to be, we success rate for people to pass the jail certification test is remarkably low, if you know. It's not as easy of an exam as one might think it would be.
It's going to be a lot.
Is that right?
And it's a lot harder now, it depends where it's involved, meaningful well, if the game is happening. It's not like, you know, have to beat somebody, and I have to pick a, pick a big spot, it's a lot more than that.
Yeah, and so. So we have, the way I think, we have three jails open, I didn't make that. Four, okay, how many do we have? What jail? Why is this? Just first, give us a thought of how many we got. Oh, that's good, that's, that's down, we're just checking the way. So we have, how many? How many, how many we have in the women's?
We have three over there, right?
Three over there, okay. Come in. At work? Recent progress?
There are fifteen at the open gym. And there are fourteen eight, at Oakdale.
Three brothers, three males, right? So we have two, so we have two jails and brothers?
Yes, sir.
Come in.
We have a case.
Now?
We have a table that they're talking, they're talking, and two products to.
We just tell them that Oakdale is what I call. So how many we have working at Oakdale? Two jails. Two, that's two to six. Two to a large shift. Two to a large shift. So we have three, so we have three, we have three there, every shift.
There are four in the whole town.
She said you had two, right? That means six.
There are two working, we, we.
Okay, that's what I asked. Hey, let's give this a little thought, I got some other things, I'm not sure you're down to thank people who go back to work. Let's come up, number sixteen. Consideration discussion possible, welcome to the bottom of the rule. For SJC elections, Minister Cheryl, two. Two of Walker. Two, I heard, and Walker, but it's true. Everybody knows, you want to see what I mean. The election from Elaine Thompson, also with it. I have a motion by Commissioner Brand, second by Commissioner Norman. Any questions, all in favor of saying aye, when opposed, aye is a yes. Seventeen, consideration discussion possible, welcome to the group presentation. Pardon, let me stop here, I'm going to go to eighteen. Eighteen, consideration discussion possible, welcome to the group base in town for urban voting and number of votes in the voting program. Urban voting and election. That's a good one, I hope. These are the standard times, there's nothing left to argue.
You know, basically, you all want to choose, and then there is one, uh, at the time of, like, we hold, on Sunday. Four minutes. But I.
You're not voting, you know.
No, I'm proposing to strike, I just don't.
Since the government, I work, why do you all have fun? I have a motion by Commissioner Brand, I say the second by Commissioner Norman. Any other amendments, all in favor of saying aye, when opposed, aye is a yes. We have a following on the election, Tom, about paperwork, you may decide. There are two, the, we also have an E S D election. And I know we go ahead and do that. Sometimes, I think, we actually sign an order of other elections. There's never gone any E S D election. I expected one of those three, the longest, the representative, one of them produces such an order. I'll call if you sign an order. Well, I've been suggesting that through this life, I notice. Instead of calling us and emailing us for fifteen minutes, after order, it's a mystery. I didn't want to say any of that, because I, every time, every time. I don't think we get, I'll call if you, up to under thirty-nine, you probably remember, if my woman, or you know we did that.
Yes, sir. Since, since the E S D is John Thomas, and it is under the county's election, will you have orders for the signing election coming along?
I think they've got a circuit of over, specifies the rate. That came up in the subject, and I said, I don't know if that's our, but every week, but. Actually, it is, that's, that's the requirement in that, over the order, who said that right? Which I think they, they said, they don't say the four thousand nine hundred nine, or cap is four one oh, I'm not sure whether that would be still four one oh. So it is, very good. Anyway, uh. Alright, number seventeen. Thank you very much.
Ah, yes, I put you on the number of, uh, what?
You're not allowed.
When you create, the number of, I mean, not what's, for, are we calling it eight four, like?
Have this button knocked, doesn't it? Yeah?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Out of number seventeen, consideration discussion possible, welcome to the group. Presentation of annual financial and schedule audit reports by Lewis Three, of Luke Watson. Question for the year ending nine thirty, day twenty-two.
Good morning.
But just for the record, I'm not going to sit in here, so you can stay in for seven. Where else is it, I'm finished.
I have to see this.
Alright, that's what I want.
Uh, I'll try to make this.
I have actually a few cities, but. They may, they will, I'm, that's, I have to come.
I was told that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll try to make this a quick buck for you all, uh, my name is Lewis Three, I'm out of Andrew, Luke Watson. Uh, for you, and you have, uh, a quick one, which is through your audit report. In front of each other, a bound copy of the report.
You are, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
But, but we're all in there, okay?
Yes, sir. And, uh, with that report, and I have, uh, this, now, here's, uh, presentation, I'll utilize that to go for the result of the audit. Uh, first, you follow along with me, uh, takes two of that, and they doubt, got all the areas on. I do all the, all the areas.
On what, you should say there are, so that, uh, this, that, the, that's, uh, literally, you have all. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I, I often need to give a quick overview of the audit process, to make sure that everyone's aware of what we're doing during the audit. So, uh, we do the audit in three stages, the first stage, we're doing some assessments and risk, uh, risk approach. Uh, assessments, we come through, and if anywhere where money's coming in, we're going now, we're guiding, we're controlling it in place. Uh, we, uh, have process procedure, there are walkthroughs, and questionnaires that we have created. Uh, and we do sample testing of the four areas, to make sure that what we see in practice is consistent with what we expect to see in our policy procedures, you know, keep with the questionnaires. Uh, in addition to that, we do, uh, a risk-based approach, where we evaluate these companies, say a mine item within their financial statements. Um, and that's just the, that can change year to year, uh, the risk, and the budget, the drive, type of procedures that we perform. Uh, to what level we perform those procedures, to make sure that we're comfortable with the tier access, and the financial statements in the audit.
Why don't we go, you know, track, every, 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 so. Every year, we just, well, have the federal, and the year, and even the small ones, seven, and. I wouldn't leave them constantly, they ask, you know. Do you go over seven hundred, six thousand dollars, and you're paying, and, and, of course, we are, I suppose, and that. It's hard to understand, that there's, somewhere on the internet, this, this thing, the files, of these people, go look it up. Is that, is that?
What's that? Uh, federal audit, clearing out?
That all, clearing.
Yes, sir, what's that?
It's part of young, for seeing, file it, or get it up, or does it?
No, we, we, we don't, we don't, and then sign off, and that's it as well. And what's the audit?
I just wanted to say, if they want to stand you, though, I don't remember what you file. Even the federal office, clearing down.
That's, come, come the year end, you get, you get contacts by anyone you work with, that has clients, and they're, because they're gonna ask you if you meet their requirement, it's unfortunate.
And where do you file, if you post it, do you, that?
Well, that's what the audit.
How on the land, you file these records, and it's, it's a record, you go look there.
Most of these agencies will, will still send a, a form that we goes out, with you, or did you not, do it, and require it. Uh, and, and, and did you put that in file?
All along, I thought, that's what happened. Whatever reason, it stood, it stood up, then to harass me, or, that'd be.
That'll keep you behind.
Alright, go, go right ahead, get to the end of it.
No problem, yeah, and, uh, any questions, I, I will. Uh, next, we use compliance testing, so public fund investment act, grants, I think that makes it, we review all of the ultimate minutes, to see if there's a component that you may have approved that has compliance aspect to it, that we need to look into. Uh, and then we do our fieldwork testing, we actually are tying out year in, uh, performing set off procedures, considering the third party wherever possible. Uh, and then as we're tying out that balance sheet, it's actually, uh, material, material accuracy of your revenue, and your spending. Uh, once we've done all that, and we've been at the conclusion report, and so, I guess we have forty years of review, uh, and, uh, there's no additional proceedings necessary. Prepare the report, between letters of that, for the twenty. Uh, next, on page three, just to give you a quick view of the component of the audit report. Uh, so the auditor's opinion letter, that's our page, you know, the financials, behind that, your management inspection analysis, it's gonna be released to some unit, your comparison, as well, as some commentary on some of the major, more material areas of the financials, such as, as, uh, your budget, capital, that, things of that nature. Uh, behind that, your basic financial statements, so it's gonna be both your full approval, uh, government wide statement, and your final statements. And then behind that, a bunch of notes, that all those, that's gonna give you a bunch of details pertaining to the members that are in this financial statement. And then behind that, required supplemental information, potential, that's the actual, through the general fund, as well as things you know, federal commission. And then other supplemental information, that other supplemental information, combined schedule stuff, including the, uh, the statements and the fund. Uh, next page, concerning the audit opinion letter, that first item on that list there, there are four possible opinion types that we had audited or taken to issue. There's an unmodified, qualified, disclaimed, or the first opinion. Uh, the county agency on unmodified, actually, often referred to as opinion. That's the highest level issues that we've audited or looked at.
Say that, I mean, it's good for, they don't want to turn that on.
The term unmodified isn't listed in that, uh, that's required, uh, this, uh, language on that letter.
You have to read it, learn the laws, and believe in it, and.
What, what it does, if there is an issue, it makes that very clear, uh, if it doesn't say clean or unmodified on the letter, you're going to clean it unmodified, it's a, but it's, it's an unmodified opinion, so.
You've come up with all the good springs and hot, and, ninety-nine, you're a good, you better manage it, that's in the back. Thanks for the.
That's, that's the, the best you can do, is what the county receives, and so that's what we want to see, and so, uh, same opinion, what's good report, and.
Probably hear that? Good, thanks, thank you, sir.
Sir, uh, page five, I just get some quick financial highlights, uh, sharing the, but, uh, fund balance for, uh, the, the primary funds, uh, in view, so the general fund. Uh, Indian interest, three twenty-three, that, uh, any fund balance at two point eight million. That's up, my, about one point five million, one point three here, primarily due to, uh, uh, spinners being under budget, being timing, uh, throughout the year, uh, it's been, revenue's been a little higher, and it's basically, well. Uh, load the bridge, uh, one, how we had, uh, small change, a six thousand, it's here, uh, just over a million dollars of fund down. The bridge two, had a new fund down to three hundred and two thousand.
So, continue this chapter. I know the general fund is, of all, is this last, the twenty-first year. The, 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 say, you won't keep the back three or four months worth of running the fund out, and that's, you can take the whole, you know, and, or, or that.
Yes, sir. And, and I actually have a comment on that on the next slide.
Wonderful. So, the road bridge budgets, well, I know, in one, for instance. The budgets, a little over, like, a million, a hundred, I don't miss that, looks bad in there, I don't, in my, in my, in my. That, that one is sort of, after, on the black, but, but I'm just, just, like, if there's, you know.
There's, a lot of times.
They can, they can, in the face of, of reform.
No, yeah, a lot of times, it's a timing, that's, that's.
Yeah, they, they're getting ready to do a big job, and then this one, at the time, you check, and you, the balance, you had it. Black there, and I know this brand has got, like, huge projects around recently, and, and other places, and they're pretty, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this is.
Trying to make that point, how people are asking, why they got so much money stacked, well, they're getting ready, you know.
Yeah, sometimes you'll see a bill over a few years, they have a big plan for it, and, uh, you know, this is a snapshot in time, it's not, uh, you know. The very next month, most of that could be gone, because of some big project.
Right, right, I just wanted to make that point, or to, to, people think, that, that, man, that's, that's, they don't really put that on, I, I, this shit, uh, you know, England, probably.
Yeah.
There's a plan, I'm sure there's a plan in place, and they're getting ready, uh, I see the goal, and they don't ask me.
Yeah.
Somebody's spending this quicker than you, they're following that.
Boy, I mean, if there's, if there's something going on, it gets a bit quick, right, so. Um, overall, and then other, uh, at, at, road bridge four, uh, Russell, consistent with previous year, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. Then E D A grant, probably the, the next larger, um, major fund, uh, most of that, in view, is twenty-three, but, uh.
Who's E D A?
Uh, first, you have the E D A grant, the, uh, um.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know, we're still.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah.
Might be a little, might be a little, maybe, I don't know, if we turn that, but it's not different, maybe.
Yeah, it should have been closed up, uh, already, but, uh, it hasn't, it's been, it's been a little, a blackened out.
But that is a, a stretch, and I'm not sure.
We're taking. Uh, and then all other funds, all these, they're special, that any funding that are, that are specific purposes, and I just give you an overall, it didn't really change, you know, that six twenty, you only have fund down, uh, uh, consolidated, a hundred and seventy thousand, on, you, for, for this year. Not been changed, all that is, those are consistent in use, for the, for specific purposes, that's important. Um, moving to page six, this could be a quick.
Hey, that point I made, I don't want to say sixteen, it says. G F O A, I've heard of that, is, is we should maintain no less than two months of work, or half the part. We're looking at the search, and we're, I'm saying, that's a good thing, it's always rather, at least, have three to four months work.
Right, and so, this is the.
You know, anybody look at strength, almost two months.
That is the minimum recommendation, and we typically, uh, make the recommendation of being what between three, five, usually, uh, some of them go as far as six months. Uh, but three months is a good, kind of our more, like, recommended minimum, and then some will go more than five months.
That's why you, G F O A.
Uh, government financial officers, that's it.
Calling it out, that's their, their minimum.
That's their minimum recommendation.
That's opposed to your, right.
Right, and so, I, so you guys are, are, uh, consistently, twenty-two is at forty-five percent, uh, forty-five, forty-five, and, and twenty-three is, uh, over forty-nine percent. So, put that fifty percent, uh, mark, which is, which is a healthy, it's not over. So, put that fifty percent, uh, mark, which is, which is a healthy, it's not over, it's not overdoing it, I've seen some out there who have huge fund balance of, you know, over, over a hundred percent.
Well, I'm making taxes, just to support power, then I try and do the best we can, and what we have. If I won't be going next year. No, I'm, I'm, in fact, the good one, that we're able to have a little something, a little backing.
Right, uh, as it relates to the budget results of the year, the general fund, um, overall revenues came in, uh, forty five, four hundred and fifty five thousand and more than budgeted. Uh, you're expenditure with under budget, uh, by one point two million, and that's just primarily a timing. Uh, um, and so, a lot of the things were delayed, uh, during the year, against storms, other issues, and just general delays as well. Uh, so you make being under budget there, uh, so positive variance, and then other sources of use of those, maybe things such as your transfers in, pictures out, um, a note will be cheaper in years, so, you know, source funding and note issues. And so, overall there, because the positive variance is one point one million, so, overall, the budget perspective, uh, total positives, like your earnings are two point seven million. Uh, so, budget looks good, a lot of those things, you wanna see those budget funds, we do like, but we know, because it's a timing issue, and things like all that, but. But, yeah, overall, fund balance looks good, the general fund, budget looks good, uh, and next is related to the certification letter, so there's two ways to come with a report. Your first letter is the certification, those charges governed, uh, that letter, there's a lot of required certification, uh, that relates to our responsibilities, that the industry audit, management's responsibilities, a few other factors that, that are required.
Do you have this letter now?
Yes, sir, there's two letters, uh, uh, and the first one, uh, also includes the three adjustments that we need, they were.
You got, I'm a bit, two hours, one whole bank, and, out of the bank where consideration, I thought that's, that goes back to about two, at least two tranches, I thought, I didn't know that was still in history, huh?
It's, it's one of the things.
A lot of things in life, in this state, is all over there, I try.
Most of them are real small, um, and, and the, one of the things that we, we, we just build every single year, so, uh, and it's also, you guess, she goes to the state, but they have a cap, if it's under a hundred dollars, they won't pay it, so.
Give me an example, are we talking about excess proceeds, and business weapons, or something?
No, what it is, is checks that have been cut and issued, um, and they have not cleared, and you can, or they're catched out, reissued, only somebody's doing it, or, they, it's a small amount, so if they, won't worry about it, I mean, these checks is kind of built up over time.
Oh, in nineteen ninety eight, I got appointed for the first, for the time, they put me on the thick layer, I worked for over a year. They left me at the paper, I didn't play anything into them, and if you just convert on them checks that had been canceled, prove that last, I'm just, I'm just fishing. But I can't get what you're saying.
It's really, uh.
Well, actually, we send them checks and they just don't cash, but, uh.
Yeah, I mean, you can go, go on to the site, put your name in, and, as usual, I would put up a five hundred dollar check out there, I didn't have to do it now, and you just have to submit a request, what you, the, if you can get, things like that.
We're not talking about, we're not talking about the citizens' money, I wouldn't want, somehow, I would shake it, so, I'm talking about this, I'm talking about things, air receivership accounts, and, and those we created because they couldn't find the people that were supposed to sign the all, but even though all this company, out of suit to. To acquire access, and, and the money that goes to the guy that couldn't locate, we put it in the, in the calendar, we're receivership accounts. At some point, he may get wind of it and show up in front of the money. That's just one example, yeah, where I'm looking in the flesh office for children who lost their parents and things, we can talk about nothing like that.
Uh, these are mostly the small checks that I've been cutting, the folks who, who've been lost them, or forgot about it, or, but, and whatever.
They're just like, feeling way on the roof, or they're.
Could be ostrich, and, um. It, yeah, and so, it's, it's a quick, with, uh, if it's leaving a one dollar, those could be sent to the state, um, and that way it comes off, it's not, it's not, we're worried about you know, or anything under that, um, you keep it in our liability account, just give it out of the back, that way it's not, uh, that the back down.
Well, it's cheap, that takes seven different things.
It's cheap?
It is cheap, yeah.
It is cheap to stay, it's something that we recommend looking at, to the family, or.
Well, I think, uh, I don't think it's a good, you know, I think that takes about seven years, but, the number is.
We should be able to upload that book, and if you come, let's get on the.
We're not gonna be heard, if we, if we, uh, uh, you know, get, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's.
You draw a line.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta break, break.
So.
Well, I'm some, and, uh, play off, it's, 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 you know, the way you say, you're a post office, like, they're, 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 it's not just, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, cancel amount, reroll, and, and, yeah, that was definitely a good, that's something we got, that's a person, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, we've seen that, uh.
I'm playing, you suggested that you're going to call, or.
No, oh, yeah, it's not, it's nothing about the process, it's totally a question of, but it's, uh, you have, uh, that happens, obviously, after surmount time, contact the, the, the judiciary, hey, you have this check, and if not, you can go ahead and issue it. Uh, one thing would be considered is, uh, if one or not, you put on ACA, and you have that, do something relevant, put on a check, you play on ACA.
If I read the letter, I would basically, like, buy, sort of, put some risk dollars, and reissue them in checks.
If they've been recent.
Perhaps doing a little, then, well, that is a friend, oh, he's still over here, how about that?
You, you might, it could be, and hey, you know, you might know some of the people on the list, like, hey, we can send that, if you're interested, you can somewhere else, and I think something like that, um, so a little bit of, if it's good, to, to try to get those through, like, folks, but, I mean, some people have moved, and, you know, there's nowhere to know how to get them, so I definitely, all you can do is shoot in a, especially for, uh, a liability account, for me.
I don't want to take nobody.
Well, yeah, as far as that situation, you can, similarly, you can receive those checks, um, um, but you have to, it's, you have to check, um, one percent, you know, from a, from a.
I used to, yeah, that's where, that's where my life was, was budgeting, and so rather to hurt them, right?
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, check box still things, so that's another reason why, uh, that's considered as, well, but, uh, but yeah, it, that's not a poor button on, uh, on, we think it's kind of, it's down, it's fortunately, something that we all have to do, check them off, and, uh, have any issue with it, but.
Well, mine was good, good control.
Yeah, everything is good, uh, and, uh, I want to, I appreciate, really, everyone, really, I think I'll have a new plan, I guess, Martin's been, he gave me after this year, and worked diligently to find everything that.
Unfortunately, the overall tree is still in progress, and so we've got, we've got lots of resources.
Right, yeah, and, and everyone, we work with this, and it's great, we have.
It means that O is something like that, that, I didn't mean O, but O, the bar.
But my contact, confusion is there, so.
Some of the guy under the property, okay, but, I don't know, if you put on this, you're not hurting.
Uh, I don't care, bro. Uh, I'm just gonna wait for this, you. And so, my contact, confusion is there, because if you have any questions, please, I think, we've got, um, available, you know, so, thank you all, thank you for your attention.
All right, I have another, uh, the next guy, I'm trying to turn it off, but I'm not able to, they're on the, you gotta go back. Number fifteen, we had, uh, considerations, does it possibly go to review the court, and potential payout, and this, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, continue our space, we're going to, and, and, and. I'm going back, uh, with the seven, with, with, with the pressure, excuse me, while we do that, what can you have, to pull the cord, or this, too? Mr. Brain, both tables.